There she is.
Oh, yeah. She is.
What is this?
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education November 14th. To order, we have members of Central Valley, students from Central Valley, who will give the pledge to the flag.
All the flag believers, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Welcome and thank you, everyone. Central Valley is very excited to host this month's Board of Education meeting. And with us this evening, we have Angelie Diola, Kaziah Tillman, Alana Diola, and we have Dane Boland back. So, welcome and thank you.
Sorry, we rehearsed this a little differently this afternoon. We also wanted to take the opportunity and welcome everyone. And with Thanksgiving right around the corner, we thought this was a great opportunity for our children to talk about things that they are grateful for. And in true elementary fashion, we have crafted an acrostic poem to share with the Board of Education the reasons why our district is thankful for our board.
Taking the time to help all children navigating change.
No one went to support snow days friendly.
Understanding leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The mission of Monroe Woodbury Central School District, we are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda? Motion. Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. School Board recognition presentations to us?
Yes. Each year, school board members put their name on a ballot and seek an opportunity to represent their district and community. Every year, the state of New York sets aside a week for board recognition. This is a great time to recognize the important role that elected Board of Trustees play in our communities and our schools. They are extraordinary people who voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing school districts. Their actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children. This year, the Cabinet is pleased to present these custom mugs. So if you look in the bags, you all have custom mugs to the Board of Education members. I shouldn't have told them to look in the bag. As you pour your cup of tea or coffee each day, we hope it will serve as a reminder of how grateful we that you do on behalf of our students. Your unwavering support, tireless efforts, and commitment of time and energy are vital to the vision of inspiring success. We could not do this each and every day without you, and thank you. In each board member's folder is a certificate of appreciation, along with a proclamation from Governor Cuomo, which states the following. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world. And whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of a child. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those in the future. And whereas the members of the New York State Local School Boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during the week of October 22nd through the 26th, 2018, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it's fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 22nd through the 26th as School Board Recognition Week. So, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up the PTA Council President Shannon Chambers, who will address the board.
Good evening. We just have a small token appreciation from one volunteer organization to another that volunteers their time to say thank you for all that you do for the school district and for the children. So, we appreciate you and we thank you.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm going to ask the Board of Education to sit in the audience for the presentation from our schools and introduce our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Hessler, who will speak about the presentation. Yes, yes.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
I love that. Ready? As soon as she's done, we'll tell.
How do you put up with this?
I don't know. Did you open up your bag?
Yes.
We had our conversations earlier this year on what we would do for board appreciation for the 1819 school year. You may recall last year that we recognized the board by establishing great connections with schools in Florida that were impacted by Hurricane Irma and collected gift cards to support them in their efforts getting back on their feet. This year, we made a decision to keep our efforts a little closer to home, and that decision couldn't be more timely, given the forecast over the next few days. Each year, the MWTA, the Teachers Association, organizes a cold weather accessory drive to clothe families in our community. And we felt that it was such a worthy initiative that we reached out to them to combine efforts and support their event. The collection is still going on, for people who are interested. They are collecting new garments. They can be dropped off in any one of our school buildings. To date, they've collected over 413 exact garments that are going to be distributed locally to families to assist them in staying warm through this, which seems to be a cold winter already. Additionally, the school buildings have prepared a message that they would like to share with you. So if you could join us down in front, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monroe Woodbury Board of Education.
Thank you, Board of Education. We appreciate being able to use Chromebooks and technology.
Come on.
Thank you for allowing us to have fun in physical education.
Thank you so much, Monroe Woodbury, for allowing college of the courses at our high schools.
Thank you for letting us meet the West Point cadets.
Thank you for our new library.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you for the wonderful people that help.
For having so many after-school activities that add so much value to our lives.
Thank you for the awesome teachers.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to play the tennis.
Thank you, Board of Education. This is my only effort.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Gracias, Board of Education.
Thank you, Board of Education.
Hello, Board of Education. We just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to have new fields and a new track that will definitely make you proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the awesome teachers that help us in our quest of knowledge.
I'm thankful for all the good teachers.
Thank you for the books we buy very.
Thank you for the nice teachers and the good crew.
I am thankful for our school because it helps kids.
I like school because I like it.
Gracias, merci, gracias.
Thank you for allowing us to have a diverse education.
I'm thankful the school board supports the energy program.
I'm in here working.
Oops, sorry.
Thank you for supporting us and always supporting our children.
Thank you for supporting us and serving this amazing community.
Thank you very much for all that you do for us and our children.
On behalf of the entire Pine Tree family, we want to thank the Board of Education for all you do. Thank you so much.
We want to thank the Board of Ed for giving us endless opportunities to support our students through learning and having tremendous amount of fun doing it. With you, Mr. Hubert, I'd like to thank you for being my fashion inspiration. I hear that corduroy blazers are back in style. Thank you, guys.
Hello, on behalf of Smith Grove Elementary School, we would like to thank you for your tireless efforts and for the amount of time that you've put into ensuring our student's success. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do for the students in our district and in the high schools.
And you're thankful that I'm not at this meeting.
Thank you for allowing us to learn all the subjects.
And thank you, Monroe Woodbury Board of Education.
Thank you.
Board of Education.
That was funny. It was great.
Next year, I think we need a roast for John.
Yeah.
A Friar's Club.
That was very good.
Where's Kodo?
Another one? Another one? Is there another one? We got another one?
I don't need a phone. Just want to get here. My password's not working.
I don't know. Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's why I said.
Meeting kind of this way. We should let Donna, you have one person who wants to get up and speak. Kim? That would be you.
I'm all for it.
Okay, I'm still back here in the fall.
You can speak right there. It's okay. So, John has to introduce. John has to do something. John is like lost. You just need to introduce and say the next person, the next item. You can do it from your chair there.
What?
That we have a speaker. We have one person. Public comments section. Kim Laskorski. And Kim's going to go to the podium. Go to the podium and say.
All right, so we have public comments is our next agenda item.
Yes.
And we have one public comment from Kim Laskorski.
Yes, perfect.
All right, so I'm talking to nobody, so bear with me. That's all right.
I'm looking at you.
Okay. Excuse my bad.
Do you prefer to come up here?
I have a big mouth. I don't even need that.
That is true.
Want me to try?
Yeah, come on.
Good evening. I want to thank you for all your continued perseverance in moving forward to build our athletic field where our students can safely and proudly display their talents, as well as offer our students a new educational and physical outside classroom. It was a long time coming. I remember the early mornings that Mrs. Rodriguez, Karen Farley, the grounds crew, and myself walked the fields in boots, mud, water, and holes. Thank you for hearing our concerns and for your endless support. Winning is not about the number on the scoreboard. It is all about teamwork, teaching, growth, and kindness on and off the plane fields, whatever the venue, be it a concert, art exhibit, football field, classroom, cafeteria, ancillary departments, office, guidance departments, or volleyball courts. We cannot tolerate inconsistency, unfairness, and meanness, no matter who it's from or to whom it's directed to. We need to not only remember the golden rule, but to believe it, to live it. That's crusade of pride. With that said, I am again respectfully requesting that a Google survey with a free text box for comments to be emailed out to all students and parents of all sports, arts, and educations, and academics. You need to listen to what our students and parents will openly, honestly share. There are concerns and issues that need to be voiced, addressed, and corrected for the better good of our students and families. And yes, the fear of retaliation and repercussions unfortunately still exist. You need to reassure that you welcome honest feedback, open communication, and a team approach to eliminate the bad and win with the good, and that no child will be punished or parent criticized for caring enough to be honest. MW Cares has to start at home. Everything goes full circle back to our kids. You have the technology, and with the push of a button, will make a positive difference to the well-being of students by developing and sending out this survey. I welcome the opportunity to work with you on this project. In closing, some staff are great, and we wish we could be more like them, and others need your gentle guidance. This survey will also serve to capture the great positive things that our staff does for all our children and parents and community, and that's what I hope to achieve by this survey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we going up there now?
Nope, you're going to stay there.
I don't know what the next, the next agenda, the next agenda item is probably items of concern from community members who spoke last time. Are there any?
We don't have any. No, we don't have any responses. Those were the gentleman who got up and asked a question about the vote, about the turf fields. I called him and we, I explained, I answered his question, so we really don't have a follow-up. So we go on to the next agenda, which is the strategic plan update.
Do you have the strategic plan update?
I do.
That's the next agenda item.
It is. So, I do want to say something to Mrs. Laskorski regarding your comment. It's very poignant. Today, I had, I met with my administrative team, and I too gave them a survey, and I asked them for honest and open feedback, because as a school district leader, if I'm not willing to listen to what people have to say about me, both positive and negative, then I will never grow. So, we will work on that survey, and you know, if you want to give us your input, we certainly will do that. But I think that we have seen that surveys really help us understand the needs of our district. So, the strategic plan, when you look at the strategic plan, you're going to see that there's a task force, and the task force is social-emotional wellness, and that's really for our students and our staff. But I want to go back to the spring of 2017, when Mrs. Talbert and Mr. Cassidy approached me and said, "We'd like to have a day called MW Cares." They spoke about what they envisioned. They talked about having hundreds of, a little over 100 speakers, and the speakers would focus on forgiveness, happiness, and all of the things that I think this district stands for. So, I immediately said yes, which is my impulsive side to saying yes when I think it's a good thing for our students. And so, they began to plan that. Subsequently, we started in January of 2018, we started our strategic plan, and we put out 6,000, we received 6,000 responses, and it was very evident from the feedback that we received that it was really important and critical for this district to really focus on social-emotional. And social-emotional wellness of not just our students, but our staff and our community, because we know that if students aren't feeling good about themselves, no matter how great the instructor is, learning will be that more difficult. So, I'm just going to briefly talk a little bit about our conference day, but first, I want to introduce Dawn Talbert, who's going to get up and speak, and I believe Mr. Cassidy, and then we have some students who are going to also speak about the MW Cares Day, which we had in October. So...
Sorry, Elsie. Good evening. We're just going to give a quick debrief on the MW Cares Day, which I hope all of you have heard by now what a great impactful day it was. And I just wanted to thank the board again, and Elsie in the Cabinet, for your support and letting us take a risk and believing in our risk to really bring this day to life and to help raise compassion, acceptance, respect, empowerment, and success in our building. Ms. Dawn is going to talk a little bit about the parent perspective and the information, you know, feedback she's received, and then we're going to bring up three students that are going to talk about the impact that the day had on them as well.
Okay, well, I wasn't going to read, but I am. As you can imagine, a lot of planning went into the day, and the intent was always to recognize our children's social and emotional needs by giving them perspective, support, and resources. I never realized the day would be so impactful for our families and community as well. In the hours and days after Cares, I heard from so many parents that shared how meaningful the day was for both their child and family. They told me that their children talked more that night and weekend than they had in years. They told me their dinner conversations were open and engaging. They told me their children were displaying true empathy for the stories they heard. They opened up and were inspired and empowered. It happened in my family. I have a 15-year-old son who's not much of a conversationalist. He came home and said, "Mom, today was great. You should be proud." Wow. I am proud. I'm proud that I'm part of a school district that always puts our children's best interests first. Mr. Cassidy and I shared our idea of a day like this with our superintendent, Ms. Rodriguez, about a year and a half ago. I'm sure it was hard to envision the idea, but she trusted in it, and we are truly thankful to her, the Cabinet, my fellow Board of Education members, and the countless others who helped put the day together. As a parent, board member, and the high school PTA president, I couldn't be prouder to be part of Monroe Woodbury.
So now, we're going to bring up Michael Brophy, Matt Coloma, and Ray Akaw. Matt, you guys can speak from right down there, man.
That's what I should have done. You move the microphone, you can face the audience. He figured. He's smarter than that.
Hello, everybody. At first, I'd just like to thank everyone who made MW Cares Day possible. It was really a great day. My name is Matthew Coloma. I'm a sophomore at Monroe Woodbury High School, and on Friday, October 12th, we attended the first MW Cares Day. Now, this was a day where hundreds of speakers came from all around the country to tell us their life stories, and the one I was most impacted by was a guy named Rohan Murphy. He lost his legs when he was about four years old, and his dream was always to be involved with the sport, and you know, facing that challenge, it's difficult for him. And so, his coach in middle school told him, "Why don't you come out for wrestling? I think you could wrestle." And he was like, "Oh, I don't know, Coach. I think I'm just more comfortable, you know, helping out the team, you know, with stats and stuff." But he decided to go out, and it turns out, his first year, he was terrible. He didn't know what he was doing. He went, had a record of like 2 and 15, but after practicing and practicing and practicing, he achieved his dream and actually went to Penn State on a scholarship for wrestling and became a wrestler for them. And he taught us never have to have any excuses in life, and I really want to turn that into something I use, because for me, it's always been, "Oh, it's all your fault, blah, 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 you know, ah, man. That's why, this is why I didn't do the homework," stuff like that. So, I want to use what he taught me, which was, "If you have a dream, go for it." And like how, if I could put it into words, I guess this is going to sound really corny, but like, if there's like, if, like you think of dreams like stars almost. There's billions of stars in the universe, so if you reach out for one, you might just grab one. So, that trademark is pending, by the way. And I'd like to thank everyone again, for everyone who put it together. All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ray Akaw, and I am a sophomore at Monroe Woodbury High School. So, I'm going to say, what sets MW Cares Day apart from the rest of these assemblies? There was an emotional reaction that we never saw before in other assemblies that were usually given at the school, the regular drugs and preventive assemblies. This one, it garnered an emotional reaction, which was very surprising for me personally as a student there. Students were crying, but not because of the intense emotional stories told, albeit that did contribute to the crying, but because of the emotional connection and the compassion that they felt for the speakers. They put themselves in the speaker's shoes. And... They put themselves in the speaker's shoes and it really allowed students like myself to gain a new perspective and it taught them a lesson that would stick with them for the rest of their life. The different speakers told a range of stories from, from dealing with drugs to dealing with lost loved ones. And they talked about matters that dealt with the real world. And students absorbed those lessons and discussed them outside of the presentations. Those speakers gave some students to speak about the, gave them, some students the courage to speak about problems more openly without the persistent feeling that they're going to be judged for what they're experiencing. And that was a big part of MW Cares Day, the acceptance. Acceptance from the students, along with the empowering words from the speakers, personally gave me the courage to speak about issues that I dealt with, problems that I thought I would never talk about because no one would understand. But after seeing the compassion and respect and acceptance that the other students had towards the speakers and each other, I realized that there's no reason to be afraid anymore, that there's no reason to hide what I felt because it's okay. I'm not alone. After Cares Day, I saw many students talking on social media about how they'll be there for anybody who needs to talk and I never saw something like that before. Empathy was an emotion that overcame every student listening to the speakers and was one of the reasons why the assembly stuck with everybody. Getting a student to think about a discussion even after the discussion ends is pretty rare. And I'm speaking from experience, but walking out of each presentation on MW Cares Day, there was a thoughtful and solemn silence that filled the halls. But MW Cares Day did not only revive feelings of empathy and solemnity, but it brought a feeling of gratitude. It reminded us of our blessings. It reminded us of the little things that make us happy. And it reminded us of the people that make our life worth living. Looking across the auditorium during one of the sophomore assemblies presented by Mark Merrill, there was a sea of students, but they all had tears in their eyes. They all connected with the speakers. They all thought about their loved ones and the memories they shared with them and they felt a connection with the speaker. They felt something that we hadn't, I hadn't seen before with others. And though it may sound a bit cheesy and a bit redundant, every word is true. Putting yourself in someone else's shoes for a change can really impact your real world. And I truly believe that's exactly what MW Cares Day accomplished.
How are you doing, everyone?
How you guys doing?
Great. First off, can I just get a round of applause for MW Cares Day? It was really great. And one of the things I'll, actually I have many things I'd like to talk about. I would like to talk about how Mark Merrill, the pro wrestler, has really affected the whole school, like even if some kids didn't even have that person to, like as an assembly, like people were still hearing about him because I feel like everybody was able to relate to him in some type of way emotionally, you know? And like one way I was able to relate to him was like when he, he had lost his mother and it really hit me hard because I lost my grandmother and like after he lost his mother, he started just to go down because everything just, you know, didn't go good for him. He started doing drugs again and stuff like that, you know, it was really bad for him. And when I lost my grandmother, it was very painful for me because I never got to see her in person and the first time I saw her was in her coffin and it was very sad. And I started to like, I don't even know how to really describe it. I just can't even describe that feeling that I got, but like everything just kind of downgraded from there. I just kind of like didn't care about everything. But then I realized, would my grandmother want me to do, want me to be this type of way, you know? And I figured, you know, I need to start rebuilding my character back up and be happy even more. And I'm like happy every day because if you wake up, that's a good day because people don't wake up, you know? And I feel like he affected everybody at that part because I saw a lot of tears in people's eyes around the whole auditorium. It affected everyone in that school, I'd have to say. And another thing I would like to talk about is how we were able to choose a schedule because I found that very, very nice. Even though it was a little confusing, it needs a little fixing, but other than that, it was amazing. But I felt like I was a college student because I got to pick who I wanted to see, when I wanted to see him. In, in college, you can choose your own classes and courses and stuff like that. And I felt very comfortable doing that, you know, because, you know, you don't really have that opportunity to do that in this school. Sometimes people pick things for you. You may not want it, but you still have to go to it and do it. And I liked that a lot, liked that a lot. I may be very comfortable in this school. Another thing, I was, oh, survey. I like the survey because usually I feel like we, like the students, don't really like give feedback because we are scared, ooh. I feel like we are scared to give feedback because if we say something negative, like, you know, feel like a teacher would get mad or sad or anything. But I really, I really enjoyed the survey because we were able to see how MW Cares Day went and I appreciated it a lot. And I found that MW Cares Day was honestly amazing because all over social media, it was MW Cares Day and the building has become unified as one. For that, for like one day, it felt really great, but you know, we're still all unified because you know, crusaders forever. But I, the students on MW Cares Day were totally different. They were not the students that I knew. Like at first in the beginning of MW Cares Day, like, oh, assemblies, yeah, whatever. But after, they were like hugging each other, you know, everybody was just showing so much love and I really liked it a lot. I liked it around the whole building because it made everyone feel very, very comfortable. And I believe that we should have MW Cares Day someday again because I enjoyed it so, so much. I appreciate everybody that, you know, set it up and all that and getting all those people to speak to us, you know, like getting them in a hotel somewhere, like it costs a lot of money. But I'm really thankful for coming to Monroe Woodbury Middle, uh, High School, sorry, still stuck. But I'm thankful for that and I'm thankful for everything that MW does for us. Thank you.
We do have a quick video and then we'll do one last summary at the end of that. MW Cares Day is not a one and done. We are already planning on some parent events the rest of this year, as well as some more speakers coming into the middle school. And Michael, we will do it again in 2020 for you as well, just for you though, not for anybody else, all right? But we do have Rohan Murphy, who Matt spoke about to come to do a parent night and that we have on January 9th. And one of the reasons we picked Rohan Murphy, before he came to the MW Cares Day, he also did a visit to the middle school. And we feel that this is going to be a great impact on our parents to come out and see what he has overcome and to hear his message. Thank you all again. Thank you for the time this evening and have a good evening.
about our November 6 conference day that we recently had. We decided that we were going to, again, focus on the social emotional wellness of our staff and students. And so we had a speaker by the name of Alec Miller, who's a renowned psychologist who talked about today's youth. And so he did a keynote for all of our staff and then our staff had 17 options to attend, which just like the gentleman who said, they like choices, I think our teachers like choices as well. So it ranged from how to help you distress, you know, to deal with stress and the other, you know, how to deal with, you know, the new learner. So there were an array of courses that were being offered to the students and so it was really an excellent day. Again, we off, we gave a survey and the feedback, Dr. Hasser, if I'm not mistaken, has been extremely positive. We just want to say a couple of words about the feedback from the staff.
Sure. One of the, one of the things that I think was awesome between MW Cares being on October 26th and the superintendent conference day being on November 6th, was that from the perspective of a staff person, it was amazing to see the response of the staff, seeing how engaged the kids were on the day of MW Cares. And that rolled over very well to the November 6th Superintendent Conference Day also being designed around the theme of, of social emotional learning. And similar to, as Mrs. Rodriguez said, similar to the, the survey that was given to the students following MW Cares, we sent the survey to the staff to gather their feedback about the presenters because many of the presenters that were there that day offer a variety of different workshops around some of the topics that were presented that day. So it gives us a good, a good sort of database of, of presenters who can come back and, and sort of advance some of these initiatives that we're speaking about moving forward, whether it be for evening sessions, similar to bringing in Rohan Murphy for parents, or subsequent staff development opportunities for the staff as well.
And I think it was the same message. We had, the message that we were giving our staff is of resiliency, hope, and forgiveness because it's really important that in today's society with everything that's going on, that we help our teachers not only give good instruction, but to also deal with the stresses that they have. So I thought all in all, it was a very, very good day. And we are already setting forth, planning for...
November 5th.
November 5th, 2019.
2019.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously, these days had an impact, especially on the days. What's important, I think, for the board and for the district is that it, that the results of those days and the effect of those days permeates every day and that there's an openness and an empathy and an acceptance and a communication amongst all of us, all of the time, as Kim Laskorski said. I mean, this all ties in together. And when I was growing up in the pre-Cambrian age, the, I thought, well, public schools are, teach academics. And how wrong I was and how responsible we are for the whole human being that are, you know, these, these students who are in our care. So I applaud this initiative. I think the board, obviously, everybody applauds this initiative. It has to be something that permeates the whole district and the lives of the students that we touch on into the rest of their lives. That's my two cents. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2018, regular meeting and October 23rd, 2018, special meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the canvas of the votes and adoption of resolution declaring the results of the special district meeting held on October 23rd, 2018?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to dissolve policy number 5210?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Stacy, speak about that.
So Chris is not here this evening, so I'll speak on behalf of the Policy Committee. We did have a meeting. The policy that is being abolished tonight, 5210, is because that policy is covered in others. So what we're working on right now is consolidating a lot of the policies that we already currently have so that they're not redundant. So that is one that is being abolished tonight, but we will come back to several of them and they are going to be inside of other policies. And our next meeting we are having is on Friday, November 30th, 9:00 AM.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the Policy Manual Update Policy, 1120, 1120 R, 1120 E.1?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Have there been any, any feedback from the public in the past month?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by the Board of Education Committees, do you, do you have anything more to say about the Policy Committees, Stacy?
I think that was that the other ones that we're still continuing to work on are involving anything with finance. So the guest speaker that we had that came in was our district treasurer, Tanya Mulhern came in, so she's going back. She will rework some of the current policies, including 5210. We will reevaluate them at our next meeting on November 30th.
Don, Facilities?
Yes, so Facilities met. We kicked off the event after we approved the new fields in the air conditioning and I believe on Monday, the plans were submitted to SED. So we'll wait to hear back from them. That could be anywhere up to four months. In addition to that, I, I went to the New York State School Board Association. We voted on about 20 resolutions. About five of the resolutions were dealing predominantly with mental health. And in general, a lot of the, a lot of the things that were focused on that day were safety, mental health, and budgeting things. One of the things specifically, there was a resolution, 17, that they were asking the state to raise the retired law enforcement cap from 30,000 up to 50,000. And my understanding is that in 2019, they, in fact, they have made that ruling. So now in 2019, I don't know the date, retired law enforcement who work as school safety officers can earn up to $50,000. I think there's some criteria there, but, so it was, it was very beneficial. There was a lot of, like I said, the mental health, I thought, and school safety were the predominant things this year. That's a bit, and obviously, the soccer teams, I did want to congratulate both the boys and the girls. Has that, has that ever happened, where one school won both?
Um, yeah, well, yes. I'm looking at...
Was it us?
Us.
Besides us, there has been. It's very rare. It doesn't happen often, but it happened to us. It was a dream.
Ra, ra.
Very cool.
I just want to remind the public, committee meetings are posted and committee meetings are open to the public. So if you wish to come to one of the committee meetings and you have a concern or just want to listen in, you're perfectly welcome. That's it, I think, for reports.
You don't want me to give a report for the Orange County School Board Association?
Yes, I do.
Well, as delicate, I attended this month's meeting, which was the STEM showcase for our county and a lot of us, Elsie, Don, Eric, Bargoff, John, went to Middletown High School to tour their STEM facilities and then that was followed by a panel discussion with the Orange County schools that were showcasing their technology. And Bargoff, who is our superintendent, for assistant superintendent for compliance...
I thought I lost my job there for a second, just for a second.
...spoke about the district's initiative to integrate drone technology into our curriculum. How's that, Bargoff?
That's good.
It was a very nice night. It was a nice facility, and it was interesting hearing all the different schools' initiatives and stuff.
Bargoff had the best presentation, too.
You know, it's interesting, we did get a call from Channel 12, so they now want to follow up with a story on the drones, so we're going to do that, and we should... Is that on the website?
I didn't see it.
We probably should, we should put it on the website, because it's a nice story, and people can see it.
That the soccer fever first go through.
Yes, that's true.
Anybody else I've forgotten? Why are you all, did you lose a bet? Are you all alone? Thank you for that.
It's because of that.
Report, I know. Personnel. Matt.
Good evening. I respectfully request approval for the items listed under personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Matt? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution separation, motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the Monroe-Woodbury Board of Education herewith authorizes the president of the Board of Education to execute a certain separation agreement and general release between the Board of Education and a certain district officer, which agreement has been reviewed and approved by the Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Business and financial, Patrick?
I would respectfully ask for the approval of the items under the business and financial section of the agenda, which include a bond resolution, which authorizes the construction of the improvements associated with our voter proposition, use of our capital reserve and issuance of debt to finance the project. We have our standard monthly financial reports for September. We have two donations, donation of 400 yards of fabric from Ultra Fabrics to the fax program at the high school, and a donation of $120 from the Benevity Community Impact Fund to the high school. I'd like to thank everyone for those generous donations. We have two contracts, one with Lakewood Compounds for the eighth grade June trip, and a contract with Curious Joel Union Free School District for the provision of related and special ed services to our resident pupils. And that's it.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion for Patrick? There being none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and, oh, they're all special education, no preschool, Agenda Item 17.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports by Board and Central Office. Dawn.
Okay, so, Sunday, I went to the boys' soccer, and that was really exciting, and their commitment and dedication was evident by how they were playing on the field, and it was a nice culmination of their title win. Congratulations to both them and the girls. This morning, I went to Pine Tree to see The Little Mermaid Jr., and that was just delightful. I mean, Stacy was just saying, the props, the costumes, the acting, the, again, the dedication and the commitment by those children was just amazing, so, thank you for inviting me.
Dawn?
Yes, so, again, congratulations to the boys' and girls' soccer. The rest of the updates, I think I've covered, and Bargoff and I have started on the data project that we had discussed, and the research is well on its way, so, looks very promising.
Good. That's for setting goals, help to quantify board goals that dovetail with district goals. Suzanne?
I'd like to start by congratulating the boys' and girls' soccer teams on their wins. It's fantastic. And I'd also like to thank everyone for the lovely gifts that we received tonight, and wish everyone, oh, I forgot, I'm hoping to go see The Little Mermaid Jr., either tomorrow or Friday morning, depending on the weather.
Oh.
Yeah. But hopefully, I'll get there either day, and have a good night.
Christian doesn't have a report for us, because he's at a dinner celebrating the soccer win.
Yes.
He was a large part of, a large part of that.
But he did, he did text me something that I'm supposed to tell the community.
Okay.
So, he, his statement is, on behalf of the BOE representative, I'm speaking on behalf of Christian Hess, he wanted to thank the entire community for all the support and love that everyone has given to both teams, and with their support, they could not have gone this far. He was, by far, you know, when you look at a student and you see pure joy, he was so excited, and he was, and he kept telling me, "Please make sure that, I'm not going to be there, but please make sure that you tell everyone how much love we felt." And it was just, it's amazing, and our kids are amazing, our coaches are amazing, and it's just a wonderful feeling to have, to win two state titles in one day is, is just great. It's a good feeling. So, Christian wanted me to share that with everyone.
Thank you. Donna?
I just want to echo everyone and say, congrats to the boys' and girls' soccer team. Amazing job. Thank you to the Board of Education for everything that they do to get this district running, and also want to say thank you to the community for coming out to vote on October 23rd and passing the bond proposition. So, thanks for that. Have a good night.
Bargoff?
Congratulations to the both boys' and girls' championship teams, as well as the girls' cross-country, to being the fifth in entire New York State.
Eric?
Thank you also to the Board of Education. Congratulations to the sports teams. Good luck. There's still some fall athletes that are still competing in postseason play at the state level right now, so, you know, good luck to those that are still representing Monroe Woodbury. Thank you to the planners of MW Cares and to the superintendent conference day. It's really exciting times to be an employee of the school district, for me personally, and there's a lot of really great things going on. So, a lot of these things happen with a lot of hard work behind the scenes, so thank you to everybody for all that you do. I attended the PTAs' president's there on October 22nd, so thank you to some of those volunteers that we were speaking about in the PTA. One last little piece about the social-emotional learning. I was at the Sapphire Hoedown on October 30th, where we have high school kids who come down and work with our K-1 students, and you want to talk about kids sort of paying it forward and giving back. To see some of the older kids coming down and working with the younger kids is just a really, really, really cool thing, kind of investing in the, you know, the future of Monroe Woodbury, and kind of paying it forward from what they got, so that's always a cool event, and good luck to Pine Tree on your drama production.
Patrick?
I also want to congratulate the boys' and girls' soccer team. Amazing achievement, and I want to reassure everyone that I was rooting for the girls' team all along, even though they were playing my alma mater, Bethlehem Central.
My wife is a Bethlehem Central grad. And she was rooting for Monroe Woodbury. Of course. Matt?
Like everyone else, congrats to all of our sports teams. Swimming and diving, I think, are this weekend, and the cross-country girls are at the feds. It's just about to start concert season, so get out and get entertained. It's still the best deal in town in terms of bang for your buck. Thank you to everyone who presented tonight, especially those who spoke about MW Cares, and the thank you video for the Board of Ed was awesome. So, those of you at the building levels, you really outdid yourself. It was very well done, so, thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Lorraine?
Yes, I want to thank everyone on the building level as well for the video. Thank you for all the beautiful gifts. I'm looking forward to seeing The Little Mermaid Jr. as well. I'm going to go Saturday. I wanted to say, congratulations to the sports teams as well. I mean, that is a great accomplishment. They looked like they were over the moon coming out of that video that you sent to us. And I wanted to say, thanks to Kim for sharing and coming up and speaking about, you know, maybe having another survey. I was just going through an email. Back in 2016, I sent an email with a bullying survey to Elsie, if she remembers.
Oh, goodness.
And hence, we got the bullying survey, but it was actually called a climate survey.
Oh, right, right.
Although it did open up a lot of dialogue, I still believe that there's, you know, a lot of work still to happen, and perhaps I can re-forward the survey that I had had originally, because I think there's some questions and some comments that are right to the point. The climate survey was good, and it gave us an idea of what the climate is like in all different school levels, but there were more direct questions that may affect some of the parents, the students, and maybe some administrators or, you know, staff that are here. Also, I attended the Monroe Woodbury, the MW Cares Day, and I have to tell you that I have been to, through the years, plenty of, we call them conventions, they're like three-day conventions, very emotional, and so I was very open to the whole thing. And I was amazed to see how many kids were really affected by it. I thought that it would be, like, one of the students stated that, you know, they never saw an assembly like this, that probably going in with an attitude thinking, "Oh, we're going to watch this, you know, we've been down this road before." But this really, really opens up a lot of hearts and a lot of minds, and I get out of things like this, a lot of hope. There's a lot of hope, because there was some stuff that was very devastating that a lot of these people have gone through, and the fact that they get up to speak and share and open up, it's very hard to teach empathy, and there was a lot of empathy, and it was nice to see that. And the students that spoke, they're so articulate, and I was, as soon as I got out of here, I have to tell you, my daughter and I sat in the car, and we both bursted out in tears because we were just so overwhelmed, and I definitely, I support it. I can't wait for the next one. That's all I'm saying. So, have a happy Thanksgiving, because that's right around the corner. Thank you.
Stacy?
I want to thank everyone for the gifts tonight and the recognition. It's definitely appreciated. I sent my thanks to Dawn and Mr. Cassidy for MW Cares. I'm just going to reiterate what everybody else said, that it was a truly moving day. I had three of my own students that were at the high school, and very similar, it was great to go home and hear their different perspectives. I don't think any of them sat in on the same assembly, so it was nice to get my take and their take, and it was just a great day, so I look forward to the next one. I also want to say thank you to Mrs. Brock and all the students for the Hoedown, because I don't have any more little kids, and it was so adorable to go back there. I just love being able to see all of them. I love the new aspect that it's been the last couple of years that the music department goes down. I think that's wonderful, like Dr. Hasser said, the little kids think they're celebrities, like celebrity musicians that are being brought in, so I really thought that was a great touch the last few years. Congratulations to all the athletes from the fall. I wish them all the best. I was so happy to see all those videos. It was very exciting for them. I want to thank Mr. Jeece and Mr. Martin. I was able to see the play today, and like Dawn said, it's pretty amazing what they can pull off in a short period of time, because they've only been in school for two months, and the music department there, all of the students, I mean, it was really great, so I hope everybody gets a chance to go to see that, because it was excellent. And I also attended the college fair last night, so thank you to the high school staff. I appreciate that it was able to be rescheduled, because we had a power outage at the first one. So, it was a great event. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Congratulations to all the athletic teams. Congratulations to Dawn and John and all the people who put on the Monroe Cares. As everyone said, it was a truly remarkable day that everyone will remember. I, too, have a 10th grader, and she couldn't stop talking about it, all her friends couldn't stop talking about it, so it was an amazing event. And lastly, I was also able to attend the college fair, and I was very proud to see a lot of the kids that I've seen grow up, now become young adults through our system and be interested in attending college, and it also makes me want to say, we should have a salary for the people on the Board of Ed.
I agree.
No, just kidding. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and have a good evening.
I want to congratulate the cast and crew of mutually assured destruction. Real entertaining, real talented group, a lot of fun. Congratulations to both soccer teams. I want to thank the Woodbury PD, Monroe Fire Department, Harriman Fire Department, for an awesome escort for the girls' team as they came back to the high school on Sunday night. I got to hang out there with Ms. Hock and see them get off the bus, and it was great that the boys' team also came back to welcome them as they came back off their awesome win. Other than that, any preview on tomorrow, early dismissal, snow day?
I know, my daughter thinks she's...
Well, yeah, nobody's going to run a spot.
Not saying a word.
Then, no.
We're hoping.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Everybody said such wonderful things, but one of the things that is really important is that all the things that are happening in this district is happening because of the Board of Education that we have. And I don't think people realize that. I do, as a superintendent, because I get to see what other boards do or don't do, and this is truly an amazing Board of Education, because they give us the support that we need and let us do our job, and because of that, we have the things that we have. And it's no surprise that we have two state championships, or that we have a day like MW Cares, or that we have a conference day where people feel that we get it, or we have Kim get up and say, "Hey, you still need to do this." We've, I think, we've created, "we" meaning the board, and "us" have created a community where people know that we care, and that we're here to make things better, and we're not perfect. But I am so proud of this board, and it's not just because they're my bosses, because they are my bosses, but the work that they do really should be commended, because it is extraordinary, and I am so grateful for everything that you do. And as we go into Thanksgiving, you know, time to give thanks, I give thanks for everybody on this board, because I will tell you that the most important thing to them is our students. It's not politics, it's not anything else, it's our students, and we really need to be, you know, they need to be recognized for that, and I am so appreciative of that. So, on that note, happy Thanksgiving.
It's nice to be recognized, and I know we all feel happy that people appreciate what we do. But for me, the appreciation comes from inside, knowing that we're, each of us doing the best we can in our volunteer roles to oversee the running of the district. We don't run the district, we oversee it. And knowing that we're doing our best is internal recognition, but I do thank external recognition and everybody tonight. A couple of weeks ago, the board went on a retreat, which basically, a board retreat is a discussion of how are we doing? It's not, it's not, we do not talk about district business. We talk about how do we operate? How can we operate better? How do we communicate? How do things work? So, that's what a board retreat is, and we got about 90% of the way through, so someday at the end of an exec, I'll get us into 20 minutes more of the end of our board retreat. I know they're going to be, the teams, the winning soccer teams are going to go to the other, all the other schools, and mix it up with the students, which reminds me of things that are done more and more every year, which is the, we talked about it before, I think the, you know, the overlapping, the older students going to the younger students, the younger students coming up, and having that intermixing, which I think is so important in developing a mentorship and a community, so that it's not just separate schools where all a district. Of course. We're going to leave the lights on for Ken.
No, Ken is leaving us again.
I know, but now we can leave the lights on. I thought that was a great thing. That was a good bit. Swan song. "We're going to miss you, sir."
We are. He's retiring again.
Are you taking another position in the district, so you retire a third time?
I know. I thought I was going to see it in another part of it. No, he's not. Exactly.
No, definitely not. Do I have a motion to adjourn and do executive session to discuss contract negotiations?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.